Twenty-one, seven PM. First order of the business, I'd like to welcome Sarah Pritchett, is that how you pronounce that?
Sabrina.
Sabrina Pritchett, I'm sorry, to the Planning Commission. And now I want to go ahead to the next item on the agenda, roll call.
All right, Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Paulus?
Here.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, next order of business, I want to explain the meeting procedures. We do have a case, but there's a couple housekeeping rules that I want to take care of, so one of the things if you're planning to speak in regards to the case, you will be sworn in to be able to speak, you will have about three minutes to speak, once you are called, so we really would like to keep it to the three minutes, I'm not sure the number of individuals that are planning to speak, but I would like to give everybody an opportunity who wants to speak. So I guess at this particular time, if there's anyone that would like to speak, I'd like to administer the oath for those individuals, and you will be required to do the raise your hand feature on your computer, and I will administer the oath right now. Okay, if you have your hands raised, I am getting ready to administer the oath, for anyone that, for anyone that plans to speak to the Planning Commission about an application on the agenda, we must first administer the oath, please raise your right hand as I read the oath. Do you solemnly swear or confirm the testimony you are about to give to this commission is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Then say, then so they say, please, I do.
I do.
Okay, thanks you everyone. I'm gonna move to the next item on the agenda, minutes from the previous meeting. I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes from, from the last meeting.
Can you please state your name, I can't tell who's speaking.
David Bills?
Thank you.
Seth Paulus, I second it.
Thank you.
The minutes have been, there's a motion for the minutes to be approved. Call for the vote?
Robinson?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Um, I believe you need to abstain, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, abstain.
Paulus?
Yes.
And Pritchett?
Abstain.
Thank you.
So the next order of business is organizational item, the first meeting of the year, we need to acknowledge the receipt and understand the meeting procedures, so can I give the approval of the twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission schedule that was in your package, please?
Mr. Gardner, approve.
Thank you.
I'll second approval.
Seth Paulus, approve.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor for the twenty-twenty-one Schedule for the City of Clayton Planning Commission, call for the vote?
Robinson?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
And Pritchett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next order of business is to appoint the twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission President will obtain a motion or nominees from the floor, from the other commissions.
I would like, I would like to ask staff, could we just briefly just go over some, the background of the individuals that want to like to be president?
So Mr. Gardner, it sounds like you are wanting to hear from the commissioners who might be interested to serve as president for twenty-twenty-one?
That's correct.
And get a little background information in terms of their interest, or in terms of kind of their occupation?
Their interest and just the background, whether it's their occupation or their experience in board commission type settings.
I think that's perfectly acceptable.
Do we have anybody who's interested in serving as president? And can we hear from those individuals if you are interested?
This is Dave Bills, I'd be willing to accept the position, I'm on the Board of Building Appeals for the City of Dayton, I've chaired that board for over twenty years, I've gone to Montgomery County TID Board, I've also been Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Planning Commission in past years, I'm not currently in that position, but I am on the other two, I'm an architect, and my business is nearby, but I'm interested in serving in that capacity, if you'd like me to do that.
My name is Ricky Robinson, can you hear me? I am interested in retaining the position as President of the Board, I have several years of community experience, I also, I serve on the Police Advisory Board for the City of Dayton, I also was the President and CEO for the Community Development Block Grant Program, I also served on the Montgomery County, it is the, it's called the CGBG Program Downtown in Montgomery County, I served on that board for about five years, I currently work at Wright-Patt, I've been at Wright-Patt for about forty-four years, I have also represent Wright-Patt on the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and I serve as a senior member of the, of Odyssey Systems where I currently am employed and manage several employees, and then I also am in charge of, right now, for the AC-130J Gunship, it's called ECB, any variance or anything that's going on the aircraft, I am one of the sole individuals that is responsible for providing information to leadership prior to any of that is added to the aircraft. I guess the next step is, we have two members to, that want to serve in the capacity of President, nomination from the committee, and we'll just take a vote.
Well, I'd like to, if that's close, I'm not sure, I'd like to nominate Dave Bills for President, for President. I'd like to nominate Mr. Dave Bills for President of the Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Call for the vote?
Robinson?
Nay.
Bills?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Bills.
So I, the next order of business would be election of a Vice President. Are there any nominations?
Yes, without a doubt, I'd like to nominate Ricky Robinson, for all aforementioned reasons of his background and experience.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Gardner.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll, call for the vote?
Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Paulus?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pritchett?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is to affirm Ms. Barb Sime, or Seem, Sime, as a twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission Secretary, I'll accept the motion and the second to approve Ms. Sime as the twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission Secretary.
So moved, so moved.
Mr. Gardner, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, I'm sorry, roll, call for the vote?
Robinson?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Thank you.
So congratulations all twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission officers, we'll move forward, next item on the agenda is old business. This is case number PC-20-02 Northwest Corner of National and Haber Road, Redwood USA LLC. The request is for zoning district change for properties at the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road, portion of parcels M-60-03-01-2, 00-22, and M-60-03-1-02-00-02, and all of M-60-03-1-02-01-05, from R-1 Open Space Residential to PD-3 Planned District-Business. The applicant intends to build a mixed-use neighborhood with multifamily residential and commercial uses, and the request was made by Redwood USA LLC, the applicant. Before we move, remove the application from the table, I want to say that the composition of the Planning Commission has changed since the last meeting, as Mr. Joseph Litvin's term has expired and Ms. Pritchett has joined the commission, Ms. Pritchett has watched the video from the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty meeting, and can participate in the hearing, similarly, and because of technical issues at the last meeting, myself and Mr. Gardner have both watched the video from the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty meeting, and can both participate in the hearing. I will now accept the motion to remove case number PC-20-02 from the table.
So moved.
We have a motion to remove from the table, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sime, can you please call the roll?
Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
And Pritchett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorman, can you please present the case before us?
Thank you Chair Bills, Planning Commissioners, congratulations to all on the appointments this evening, prior to starting my presentation, I'd like to recognize the city's Law Director, Ms. Martina Dillon, to come up and speak a little bit, there was some question at the last meeting, December twenty-first, about, I guess, the applicability of traffic and the consideration for the zoning district change, so Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members, President, Vice President, consistent with Mr. Dorman's statement a minute ago, and I'll try to keep this brief, I don't want to linger too much, because I know I did provide information to the Planning Commission members a few weeks ago, after I received a request from Mr. Kuntz's office with respect to this, initially, I just want to say, I did as well review the entirety of the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty Planning Commission video, so that I can make sure I was fully understanding the issue, as I understand that the question was, and the reason that this rezoning request was tabled at that point in time, was essentially, would it be appropriate for the Planning Commission to condition rezoning approval upon the applicant obtaining and submitting a traffic study? Having reviewed that, reviewed Ohio law, reviewed the Planning Commission video of that meeting, I would agree with what Mr. Kuntz and Mr. Thurman indicated during that meeting, which was, it would not be appropriate at this point in time, and just to summarize Ohio case law, it would be inappropriate to use zoning to regulate traffic, as Mr. Kuntz and I believe Mr. Dorman indicated, and I think Mr. Robinson also indicated it at some point during the meeting, there is an appropriate procedure that the city is required to follow in these cases, rezoning is the first step, and I believe it was Mr. Kuntz and/or Mr. Dorman who indicated at the planning development phase, which is the next phase, should the rezoning be approved, then a traffic study would be required at that point in time, it would be premature, I believe, at this point in time to require that traffic study, so that was the information I was requested to research, review, present to Ohio law, and provide, and I will answer any questions, if there are any, if not, then I will sit down and allow you to continue with your meeting. Thank you.
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd like to recognize the Development Director, Jack Kuntz, he would like to speak to briefly about the Plan Clayton process, and how that is applicable to the application before us tonight.
Thank you Seth, I'm gonna make this a little briefer than I did the last time, I believe my presentation about Plan Clayton was about fifteen minutes long, so I'm gonna try to keep this to about five minutes, just really kind of want to summarize why the planning document is such an important piece of this decision, and why it needs to be considered, along with the overall growth pattern in the surrounding areas. Plan Clayton is a comprehensive land use plan for the City of Clayton, the document is a result of almost two years of work, interviews, surveys, research, and a comprehensive review of Clayton, and how the community as an entirety believed Clayton should grow. This process was not quick, it took almost two years, there were public surveys, in-person interviews, community forums, advertised online, in day and daily news articles, the city's quarterly newsletter, at Clayton's Government Center, on the radio, and on the city's website. Forums took place during the day, evening, and on weekends, to ensure everyone could participate at the desire to, drafts were available for review online and in hard copy format, open community meetings were held to discuss concerns and strengths of the proposed document throughout the process, feedback was then included with the final document, which was ultimately approved unanimously by the Planning Commission and City Council. All aspects of Plan Clayton have been available online for the entire community to review since this process began. It continues to remain on the city's website for future residents and commercial end users to review prior to making any decisions on their future within the city's corporation limits. The final document is one that built upon the foundation laid out by the former nineteen-ninety-nine land use plan. It took into consideration what former city leaders and longtime residents and stakeholders envisioned when we first became a city in nineteen-ninety-eight. Both the nineteen-ninety-nine plan and the updated Plan Clayton document also realized that to survive and thrive as a city, we must continue to be a jurisdiction that grows and develops in order to be fiscally viable, and provide high levels of city services to the community at large. Designated areas of future growth patterns were identified in the Plan Clayton document to provide staff and elected officials the framework on where and how the city should grow. These future growth areas were not plucked out of thin air, they were studied intently, and ultimately suggested based on hard empirical data collected during the process, a process the Planning Commission, City Council members, and the public at large all participated in. The intersection of Haber and National Road is an area that has been designated for future growth for over twenty years, the original nineteen-ninety-nine land use plan designated this intersection as a mixed-use area, including residential and commercial uses, the Plan Clayton document has identified this intersection as the Clayton Commercial Center, this intersection is considered both a future commercial and residential neighborhood on the future land use plan, because it's been designated as a flex-use area with a mixture of uses, residential, commercial, and open green space. This intersection sits directly on National Road, otherwise known as US Route Forty, there is approximately two miles between Haber and North Main Street, between these two points, there are five large-scale residential developments with access onto National, some of them with over two-hundred residential units, there are at least a dozen commercial strips in varying sizes along the same distance, the Inglewood Government Center, including the Fire and Police Headquarters, are located along this corridor, so is the Klepp's Early Learning Center, Klepp's YMCA, Sinclair's Inglewood Campus, Kettering Health, and the Village of North Clayton, Northmont's High School and Middle School are located directly to the west of this intersection, the new Northmont Library is going to be located directly on National Road, approximately a mile from this intersection, due to its traffic volume and its direct proximity to residential, commercial, and educational end uses. In terms of land use, this corridor has and continues to be one in which residential and commercial development has occurred, and the natural growth pattern has continued to move west, from North Main Street along National, towards this specific intersection. The rezoning application before you tonight is for that only, the rezoning of land located at the intersection of Haber and National, legally speaking, this applicant was under no obligation to even divulge the exact particulars of the end use, except that it would conform with the uses found in the proposed zoning district. The Planning Commission will hear additional applications for this project, in open public meetings, as it progresses, where things such as traffic patterns, stormwater, drainage, lighting, buffers, aesthetic quality, and site layout will be discussed and ruled on by this board and eventually City Council. Those aspects of this project will be appropriately vetted and discussed as the project moves forward, the city has professional staff and engineers who will review the future plans to ensure the project is finished to code and all appropriate life safety aspects are considered. These aspects of the project will come before the Plan Commission and City Council to consider in open public meetings, as this is the legally required process. The rezoning case tonight is not the appropriate platform to discuss those issues, tonight's case concentrates on the use of land, this land has been designated for a mixture of use typographies for over twenty years, the growth pattern is consistent with what has occurred along National Road for the past several generations, the submitted plan meets the Plan Clayton document almost perfectly, and will assist in continuing to grow Clayton in the fashion which all the community and business stakeholders deemed appropriate only two years ago. There are three statements in the letter that you're viewing right now, found at the beginning of the Plan Clayton document, which all the City Council members signed, after they unanimously approved the new land use plan in two thousand and eighteen, those three statements are as follows, "This comprehensive land use plan will be a part of our staff's daily efforts to build upon the foundation of the nineteen-ninety-nine land use plan, the update will continue to provide a model of development that the city can follow for decades to come, and finally, the City Council fully supports this plan, and we encourage the entire community to embrace it as well." These sentiments are important as they accurately describe what the Plan Clayton document provides, it's a roadmap, it's a model for the future growth of our city, cities must grow, otherwise the tax burden of city services becomes too cumbersome to realistically survive. Plan Clayton is the document which tells us how to grow responsibly and in a smart fashion, it's also a document the application before you tonight meets perfectly, and is why, once again, staff recommends approval for it. Thank you guys very much, I'm going to transition to Mr. Dorman, so he can introduce the case and the application to you once again, thank you.
All right, thank you Mr. Kuntz, Commissioners, I'd like to talk a little bit about the application before us tonight, it's a proposed zoning district change, the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road, from R-1 to PD-3, I've listed the parcels that are involved, either portions of or all of, the three parcels listed, there's an overall area of the property of thirty-three-point-seven acres, the applicant, as stated before, is planning a mixed-use development with multifamily residential and future commercial uses. I wanted to show you a survey of the subject property, so the area shaded in tan is the subject property that's being rezoned from R-1 to PD-3, the area in green is an area that is not, that is owned by Mr. Landis, who's the property owner of the subject property, but is not being sold as part of, or is not in the contract as part of this development. I wanted to share that, and this is an aerial view, just from the county auditor's website, their GIS, I've tried to highlight in yellow kind of the area of the subject property, and then to give you an idea of what surrounds, so you can see the Northmont School Campus, you can see the Inglewood subdivision to the east, and in other land uses that are, that surround this property. The proposal includes approximately twenty-seven-point-three acres for apartment home development, and six acres for future commercial development along National Road, ten of the twenty-seven acres involved in the residential area will be for open space, that represents about thirty-seven percent of the land area for residential, the current zoning, R-1 permits single-family dwellings, adult family homes and care facilities, conditionally permitted in the R-1 are bed and breakfasts, public parks and recreation, non-commercial recreation, cemeteries, educational institution, institutions, and halfway houses, proposed zoning is PD-3, which permits retail and service establishments, office establishments, residential and recreational uses, and farmers' markets, any development in the PD-3 is subject to Planning Commission and City Council approval of a preliminary and final development plan, which comes after the zoning district change, if that's approved. To summary of the zoning change plan, there is a new version in your packets this evening, and what that does is it takes into account the easement for the underground gas line, and a traffic opinion was done by the applicant, and it suggested that the access on Haber Road be moved a little bit to the north, so it has been, and that, that really accounts for the additional acreage that's now in the future commercial, it went from five-point-four acres to six, so you can kind of see those changes in the plan that's shown to the left. Just to talk a little bit more- Just to talk a little bit more, the community will be privately funded. It contains 147 market rated apartment homes. The buildings, as I mentioned, were slightly adjusted for the underground gas line. Each unit will have a two-car garage and room for two cars in the driveway. Again, access would come from Haber Road, and you can see it's newly laid on the concept plan, and from Fox Road. There will be numerous resident and community amenities, some of which include a linear park. There's a multi-use path that's planned along Haber Road. There's several centrally located open spaces. There's sidewalks throughout the development and a path that kind of leads from the sidewalks within the community to the multi-use path. There is proposed a 30-foot building setback around the neighborhood. The apartments are finished with durable materials, including a 30-year dimensional shingle, vinyl sheik, and horizontal lap siding for the walls. Analysis of the request with Plan Clayton, and I think Mr. Coontz alluded to this. This area is called out in Plan Clayton in the regulating plan for the Clayton Commercial Center, and that calls for a mix of flex, or a combination of flex and mixed uses and parks. And what Redwood Clayton, the project, is proposing is a mix of residential and commercial uses. The proposed development, as you look at Plan Clayton's guidance, the proposed development hits squarely on three of the four primary goals, including creating walkable neighborhoods, developing central cores, and connecting parks. It does not meet the making great streets and infrastructure. That really is not applicable because the internal streets and walks will be private. Project next steps. So after Planning Commission has their hearing, they'll make a recommendation to City Council. That's what we're here to do tonight. City Council will then hold a public hearing and make a final determination on the zoning district change. Should the zoning district change be approved by the City Council, Redwood would then be able to submit for their preliminary and final development plan approval. The application, as I mentioned, would require public hearings both with the Planning Commission and City Council. The preliminary and the final development plan submitting requires the following information. So we will request and receive a traffic study, which will consider the impact of the development on the area roads, and will make recommendation on road improvements to address the impact of the development. The development plan set, which are the engineered drawings for the project, will include utilities, grading, stormwater and drainage information, building architecture and design, and also landscaping. So with all of that said, our recommendation to the Planning Commission is we've reviewed the application and we've looked at our guiding document, which is Plan Clayton and the regulating plan. We recommend that Planning Commission make a recommendation to approve the zoning district change from R1 to PD3. The condition that I would recommend to the Planning Commission, the condition would be if approved, and the subsequent preliminary and final development plans are then approved, that the applicant combine the lots involved in the development into one primary parcel for the residential development, and then to establish lot lines for the future commercial properties. I don't think this would need to occur immediately, but it should occur prior to the applicant submitting for zoning certificates and building permits for the initial phase of the residential construction, and then prior to the permit submittals on the first commercial outlot. So with that, I'm going to leave the zoning change plan up for the discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Is the applicant present tonight? Mr. Thurman, do you have a presentation you'd like to make? Or is there anything you'd like to add to what the staff has presented to us?
Yes, sir.
Well, they're setting that up. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gregory Thurman. Address is 20 Village Square, Glendale, Ohio 45246. I am the Vice President of Acquisition for the Southwest Ohio District of Redwood, USA. As he gets that up, we'll get into it, I guess. But I'll warm it up by a little bit here. We have six communities in our Dayton market right now, some with multiple phases. We're here in Clayton tonight by choice. We constantly search for the communities we want to become neighbors in because we don't sell our properties. We look for the communities that are going to support the business plan that we have. We're a business, and that business is offering a housing choice with our product. So we're here on purpose. We're here for a purpose, and it's not by chance. Your land use plan, comprehensive plan, matches what we do, and we've done that very successfully over the last 30 years. And at least six times in the local Dayton market, and about 10 times in the Cincinnati market. But I've been involved since starting this division in 2014 for Redwood, and we have a long, hard life ahead of us to build our product in suitable markets. And that's why we're here in Clayton tonight. Is it okay if I talk close enough that I leave the mask on? There we go. Full screen, please. Okay.
You may be able to flip, change slide down if you want to try.
Yeah, I'll give it a try. Is it going through the machine here? Oh, I got you. Okay, we've covered our introduction. Next slide, please. Oh, boy. So that's my background there. We've covered that already. There's no reason to restate that. Who is Redwood? Okay, so we only build one product. We've only done that for the last 30 years. We've never ventured outside of our wheelhouse, which is building single-story, two-car-attached apartments. And we've been very successful with that since 1991. Our portfolio includes nine, or a little over 12,000 units. That's probably a little low from last year. We closed about 1,600 units last year in seven states. We have an excellent lease portfolio even during the COVID condition, and that's because we have financial applications and credit applications that accompany anybody that wants to rent from Redwood. So they're vetted pretty well, and they want to live there. So that's why our portfolio lease rate is so nice. We are resident-focused. Again, we don't sell our properties. We maintain ownership, which means we'll be part of the fabric of Clayton for decades to come. When I say we're responsive to neighbors during the design phase, if we get that far, that's where we fix things that might be adjacent to us that need a little attention. There might be a stormwater situation that needs a little attention. Maybe I take care of that by putting a swale that takes care of that. We address the traffic. We got an opinion letter from a traffic engineer. There were no surprises as far as we were concerned. I think there were no surprises as far as staff was concerned, so we'll address those if we get that far. Go ahead to the next slide, please. This is where we build. We have about 14 communities in the southwest Ohio area. You can see, you might not recognize some of the names down south, but the Dayton names are pretty easy to figure out and pick out: Troy, Springfield, Van Daley, Tip City, Fairborn, Sugar Creek Township, Washington Township, Centerville. So we have a great track record there. We have a great relationship with the municipalities or townships that we build in. And every once in a while, I get a call that something might be available that's suitable for Redwood, so we're generally welcomed back to the community with open arms. We're a very low-impact and good neighbor, and we're proud of that. So we can move on to the next slide there. What do we build? This is the single-story model that I just described a few minutes ago. There's a lot of things here that are very conducive to attracting an empty nester or senior. Part of that is every unit has a two-car-attached garage. You walk in from your garage to your kitchen with your groceries, just like you do in a normal home that most of these people have had for many years and are choosing a different lifestyle at this point in their life. We extensively landscape our properties. We talked about the open space. At least staff did address that. The open space is important to us because we like to landscape that and become a passive amenity that adds value, not only to our immediate area, but the streetscape and the neighbors that have to look in. Zero clearance thresholds accommodate wheeled access into our units. Everybody has a personal outdoor patio. The kitchens are eat-in with a walk-in pantry, full-size washer and dryer in every unit. Next slide, please. So this is just some bullet points on who lives here. We've covered that we attract empty nesters. We do have a young professional contingency here in our communities, and those are for the wild overachievers that just don't have a need for moving into a single-family home and wish to rent and have a maintenance-free lifestyle. The people that rent from us appreciate the way we build our units. Everything we do is geared towards low-energy usage, lots of Energy Star certification as far as the windows we select, the insulating envelope program we select. Every unit gets a high-efficiency HVAC system. So these folks are living in units that might be built better than what they're coming from. The other thing we do, of course, is two-by-six exterior insulated wall construction. We're proud of that. It adds value to a low utility bill on a monthly basis. That translates to higher rents, of course, but the people are getting value out of that rent. Go ahead, next slide. This is really an indication of the difference between renters and mortgage owners, and there really isn't any. The conception I hear frequently is that renters don't pay property taxes. They sure do. We have to pay it. The owners of the community have to pay that, and that translates down into the rent. They cover their personal belongings with renters' insurance. All the things that mortgage owners do to maintain and keep their properties, renters do indirectly, and Redwood manages that for them, of course. So that's the premium they pay to be renters of choice and live in one of our Redwood communities. Next slide, please. So we know the site, 33 acres. Current zoning, proposed zoning is PD-3. That coincides very nicely, near-perfectly, if anything can be perfect, with the comprehensive plan, Plan Clayton. Next slide, please. So the plan benefits. Other than fitting nicely with the comprehensive plan, it's, compared to single-family, it looks like high-density, but it really is a lower-density choice that we're applying for here. 5.3 dwelling units per acre, that's what DUA stands for. And with a commercial component out front, we have nothing identified there, whether it's an ice cream shop, or a dentist, or a bakery, or a doctor office that's left open for the market to determine. So our traffic opinion was based on the worst possible thing we could do, which is a Starbucks on the corner with the drive-thru. So we've tried to address the worst-case scenario, and I think we'll cover that if we get lucky enough to move forward and explain that in a preliminary development plan. Lots of good things with positive tax revenues, minimal costs to Public Works because our roads are private. We build them out of concrete for long-term maintenance. So Public Works has no maintenance budget for anything internal off of Haber Road, or Fox, or National. We generate very few students for the school district to worry about. We have 147 units. About 7.5% of those units will have one or two school-aged children, averaging 7% at 1.5 students. The math might be 15 students here in this entire development. So that's a good thing for the school district. Seth talked about the architecture, the exterior. Everything there is a summary of the things that have been talked about several times. The interior is kind of special for an apartment. Again, it's single-story, and every unit is a two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car-attached garage. It's a neat plan. It's well-designed. It's got volume spaces through the kitchen, great room, and den area. The energy efficiency we talked about and the value that brings to our customers. Every bedroom has a walk-in closet. We have a kitchen pantry. All counters, including the bathrooms and the kitchen, have granite countertops. And we also employ an LED lighting package to continue our theme of energy efficiency. And every unit has a hookup for washer and dryer, just like a home does. And we are smoke-free, but pet-friendly. Next slide, please. That's about all I have to say about our application, and if you have some questions, I'd be happy to stand by and answer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Any commissioners have any initial questions for either staff or the applicant?
I do for the applicant. Just a couple. So one thing you mentioned I thought was a positive. I just want to kind of footstump that. So based on the privacy of the complex that you're doing, the maintenance burden will not impact Clayton residents?
Not one cent.
So and then the taxes. I'm not sure if you can kind of give us an idea of, because the taxes will pay into the schools, the county. And with 147, I think it was?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then you also had 147 units. That's a word of question. I talked about taxes. Oh, square footage?
Yes, sir.
The average square footage per unit?
Yes, sir. We have about four different configurations of those square footages, all two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, and they average about 1,300 square feet plus 400 square feet of garage. They're a nice home. You don't think you're in a tight little apartment when you're inside one.
Last question. So when you said you're basically a lot of the, like a target audience that you work with for your units, have you ever worked with the, well, in this case, or in this area would be Right Pat Housing, at all to target our military folks for housing? Because we have a lot of folks moving in and out, and some are not looking for permanent residents.
That's right.
So I don't know how your marketing folks ever... So I don't know how your marketing folks ever take an opportunity to look into our military folks at the base.
So that's a great question, of course. We have several phases of Redwood finished communities. We're actually building another couple of phases in Fairborn. So that's really down the road from the Air Force Base there. But we offer first responders, including veterans, discounts on their rent and their deposit. So we, and we have lots of, well, we have marked police cars in our communities because that's where they live. But we have lots of veterans, and any given day, you're going to see a camo outfit walking down the street, going to or from work locally there. So our operations department really leverages our involvement with the first responders and veteran community.
All right. So the reason I ask, I actually also served as the communications team lead for, at Wright-Patt when they did the housing privatization for the military. So when they changed Page Manor and the bricks and all that stuff. So we saw some of the things that was happening there.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the commission have any questions?
Hi, Greg. Could you just explain for everybody the difference between market rate and high-end?
Yes, sir. So, well, market rate and subsidized are the two comparisons, really. High-end is what we are. I mean, we're in the rental range of $1,500 to $2,000 a month. That's not affordable housing. It is a housing that's affordable for many of the target home renters that we obviously have in our communities. But market rate means we go to the bank and we get a loan, a construction loan, just like when you build your own home. We're building our own home that's 147-strong. So we get a market-rate commercial loan. We do business with every large commercial bank in Ohio, bar none. Well, I guess as loans mature, they might be complete. But we do a lot of business with banks, involved with a lot of the appraisers and the loan officers in those banks. But everything is done just like when you go to buy land and build your home and get an end loan at the end of the project. So we might get a land loan, a construction loan to build our units, and an end loan after everything's built and appraised and 95% leased. Thank you.
Ms. Bridget, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulus?
No, I do not.
Thank you, sir.
So I will accept a motion and a second to open the floor to public comment at this time.
Make a motion that we open up the floor for public comments?
Seth Paulus, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, can you please call the roll?
Robinson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes?
And Ms. Bridget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Individuals joining the meeting on Zoom, I remind each of you that you have three minutes to make your comments to the planning commission when you are called on. Please state your name and address for the record, then make your comment. Please do not make any repeat comments from what has already been said from the public this evening. And I'll remind you that the focus of this evening is the question of zoning district change. Issues related to traffic, stormwater runoff, and other specific plan-related items will be addressed at the next phase, which is the preliminary and final development plan. Finally, do not direct any specific questions to staff or the applicant. After the floor has been closed to the public, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to any of the public comments received. So in the best interest of order and time, I'll ask Mr. Doorman, call out the names from the meeting registration list from December 21st, 2020 meeting. If you are attending tonight, that will be your opportunity to speak. We'll give you a few moments to tune your audio on before moving on to the next name on the list.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. To clarify what we'll have, what we're going to do is working with Chief Garver. We're going to ask the public that's on Zoom to raise their hand. There is a raise-your-hand function in the participant panel or the participant tab. And then Chief Garver will be calling or selecting individuals to come online and to state their comment to the commission. Thank you.
Also, if you're attending tonight and your name is not called, there'll be an opportunity, once we get through the list of meeting registrants, to still provide any new comments.
So the call was for Donna York?
Yes. It's Dana, actually.
Sorry, Dana. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have family, and I will be purchasing a house at 10635 Haber Road. So my main concerns with this is the commercial property on the National Road. I believe it was brought up in the last meeting that he, or that, sorry, the company that is looking to purchase this does not specialize in commercial development, and they will be selling this off. Now, will that be sold off to the highest bidder, or will the city be able to control what actually gets put there? It's a question I have, because the zoning is for commercial residential. The only thing being proposed here is residential. And then the other thing is, they're saying there's no taxpayer money being spent to develop this, but there's no sewage, I believe, on that side of the road. So will the city be responsible for getting sewage over to the development? That's another question I have, because that will be taxpayer dollars. That's it.
Thank you, Dana. Shannon, if you can unmute. Shannon, are you still on the meeting?
Hi, yes, this is Shannon Fitzwater. I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Blandford?
Good evening. Jeremy Blandford, 10801 Haber. I've sat down over the last month and read through Plan Clayton, and I think I can speak for a lot of us and say that we're not necessarily opposed to building, but this isn't the best location for this proposal. What I've seen with Redwood and their neighborhoods, they tuck them in to, in between existing neighborhoods. And personally, I think this would be better served. There's 183 acres on Sweet Potato Ridge that are for sale, close to 48, close to small-town shops and Union. It's not a far walk to Englewood, and it only adds a few minutes to I-70 via Haber or Sweet Potato, or 40 for that matter. But in going through Plan Clayton, I don't see where this really fits in with the ideology of it unless you just really stretch it. I mean, I've got so many citations here for, you know, different areas, you know, wanting to get away from garagescapes, and that goes out the window because this becomes a, basically a private subdivision. It's, for all intents and purposes, it's not open to the public. We can walk, but, you know, the green spaces aren't open to the public. It's not a park. I can go on and on and on with, you know, I've got two pages of citations just from Plan Clayton. You know, we lose the central core idea, which was listed multiple times throughout, you know, the, make Plan Clayton was, 56 pages if you double-stack it, and so, you know, 100-page write-up. And I don't see where this really fits in with the plan. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Blandford. Mike and Teresa?
Hi, this is Mike Greer, motto, 9581 Fox Road. Actually, I'm very much in agreeance with Jeremy Blandford. I believe the original intent was a commercial city center. A massive apartment complex does not meet that intent. You can call it whatever you will with a few small lots out front for commercial development, but that was not really the intent. I was actually involved in the 99 land use plan, and I can tell you, that was not the intent, not at all. The other thing I'd like to say is, I hope members of the zoning board and the Clayton Council have driven through some of the Redwood communities. They don't look like us. They are non-stop garages, lots of cement stacked on top of each other. The architecture doesn't match us, in my opinion. It's cheap. It does not look like North Clayton at all. Vinyl siding and stone veneer is not high-end. That's low-end. I would just ask the members to please drive through and ask yourself, this primary of Clayton, do we want it to look like this? And I think if you did drive through, I think your answer is going to be no. We don't want to define Clayton in a Redwood community. Thank you. I'm finished.
Thanks, Mike. So at this time, we have no other raised hands.
Why is there a retard?
Public comment at this time?
I'll make a motion, then we close the floor for public comments.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Robinson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
We had a last-minute public comment. Would you, would you guys hold on the motion and accept?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Christina Crawford.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Christina.
Okay. Our address is 4725 National Road. It's a new build. I just simply want to say that I do agree with the last two gentlemen that were speaking. And I also want to say that at the last meeting, when they were talking about Plan Clayton, they had said that they had 500 people that had said yes to this, and at this time, we currently have 507 noes. So, you know, I feel like, I realize this is a zoning meeting, but I really feel like the city needs to listen to the people that are living in it. And that's it.
Thank you, Christina.
This is Greg Childers. I do not have an option to raise my hand. Can I speak at this moment?
Go ahead, Greg.
I live on Haber Road, and one thing that I don't know if anybody's given a lot of thought to is northeast of where we live, northeast of the building location, is a gravel plant and a concrete plant. And then northwest, up on Route 49, is another gravel plant. So I think that the last meeting, it was discussed that this would probably be a two-year project. I can only imagine Haber Road would be the main location for all this traffic to be driving north and south constantly up and down Haber Road with large dump trucks and concrete trucks. And that's something that I know that I personally am not looking forward to.
Thank you, Greg. At this time, if there's any other members from the public who would like to speak, please message the meeting administrator or unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Okay, at this time, we are not receiving any more comments. It would appear.
So again, I'll ask for a motion and a second to close the floor to public comment at this time.
Motion to close. Seth Paulus?
Second. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please call for the roll.
Yes.
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 Alice?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Thurman, at this time, would you like to respond to any of the comments we received from the public?
Thank you. The, there was a comment about the commercial process. That is exactly similar to our process. We know what we're going to propose for preliminary and final development plan on the residential part of this tract. The commercial person, whoever that ends up being, may never be, would have to come in and propose a preliminary development plan, no different than anybody else that has land and wants to come and develop it. So that process is identical, whether it's identified now or not. As far as off-site costs for utilities, we haven't gotten into any scope of that whatsoever. We know the utilities are available, whether I have to go 1,000 feet down the street for this, that, or the other thing. That's in the next phase, and the financing of the project to determine the viability. As far as park space, for somebody to say that there's no benefit to the greater good by putting a linear park along a public street that's maintained and built by the applicant of that property, unless you don't look at it, I guess, it's not. But the streetscape is impeccable here, and the proposal of five to six acres of linear park along the public street is of great benefit to anybody that lives in the city of Clayton or goes northward. So to me, that's a big check.
So to me, that's a big checkmark on the comprehensive plan, and I think that was agreed to by your staff. And those are the three comments I wanted to make, as far as any of the feedback tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thurman. Any commissioners have any more questions? Of the applicant?
I got one last question. Do you have like a tenant association there?
No, sir. We're a single-owner entity, so we're the HOA effectively. So we have some volunteer programs for a garden club or something like that, but otherwise, we're a sole entity, and there's no HOA involved, because that would be for a public subdivision. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the density, you have a plan, what's going to automatically be proposed?
Yes, sir.
Members of 147 units?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will ask for a motion in a second to make a recommendation for approval, approval with conditions, or disapprove the zoning district change. So anyone from the commission want to make a motion as to recommendation for approval, approval with conditions, or disapprove?
I make a motion, approval with the conditions the staff has set.
Your name, I can't tell who's speaking.
Garner.
Thank you.
So technical question here, is that if we're recommending approval per staff recommendations, is that one with conditions?
Yes. If you would like to include the condition as put in the staff report, could you please
So the staff recommendation reads that the applicant approved for zoning change and subsequent preliminary and final development plan, combine the lots involved in the development into one primary parcel for the residential development, and establish lot lines for the future commercial properties. This does not need to occur immediately, but should occur prior to submitting for the zoning certificate and building permits for the initial phase of residential construction, and prior to permit submittals on the first commercial outline. So the motion is to approve with conditions as outlined in the staff recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
All right, so the planning commission has recommended that the city approve with conditions the zoning district change request for the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road. There is no new business to come before the commission tonight. The next planning commission meeting will be held on February 22nd, and I'll now accept a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed signify by saying nay. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.